That we should take advantage of it. We had a neighbor that had a leaking irrigation system that caused them to, you know, using up thirty-two thousand gallons of water.
It's significant.
And they didn't know it until they got the bill. So, you know, that could, a lot could be prevented. The cost to the homeowner as well as the conservation, as you mentioned, Angel. So, I absolutely think it's something we should do.
I want to make a, just a point of information that when these incidents happen, when somebody has a leaky water toilet or a irrigation so forth, that does create a revenue for the city. However, we as residents are the owners of that facility. So, the point being is, is that when we go down this road, we may see, it may on one level look like there's actually an increase in cost to us versus what we're doing. But in the overall value of the package, I think that we're going to see something that's very positive for the city and the residents that does have a true total savings of the whole package. I just want to.
And our experience with the meter reading company has not been that positive.
Has not.
Any other comments?
I agree. We need to move.
Yeah.
Thank you. We will be taking that up with them, I believe, in August. They will be taking a small vacation in July, matching your schedule.
I guess, based on that discussion, and depending on how the UAB takes a look at it, because they recommend to you, we may, even though we had a commitment to take the four percent increase down to two if we got the grant, which we did, you see the pro forma, we may ask you to retain the four percent if it feels warranted to go this route for automated meter reading.
Where is it appropriate on here to make a suggestion that we should also begin to explore septic-to-sewer conversion in our system? There's lots of press going on in the county. They're doing a lot of work, and we're kind of mum on the subject. And it just seems like we should at least be looking at this. So, I just.
Yes. We have been asked to contact the consultant that works for Charlotte County, who did the study on septic and what it means to the canal system and the waterways. We called him. He's supposed to call me back as to what meeting in August or September he will be able to attend and address City Council to discuss with Council what he did for Charlotte County, to see if we want to be a little more proactive in that area. We have not. We, if a community comes to us, like San Sebastian, they came to us.
Right.
We didn't go to them.
How many communities do we have without?
Well, it's Charlotte Park, basically.
We, we did attempt. We invited Charlotte Park. And, and I think it's time for that discussion again. So, it'll be interesting.
Basically, all of Charlotte Park. Because some of the other areas that have, are on septic, that are in our utility system, they're, they're not as developed. They're not on canals necessarily. They may have large properties that could warrant a septic right now.
I just think that within our, within our utility service area, it would be good to identify all of that and, and really look at a long-term plan. It's.
I mean, it's unfortunate the state has not been able to come up with a decent plan, or at least a position that directs, you know, local governments to move that way because they discuss it every year. And then, you know, it just kind of stays in limbo. The funding is always the issue. So, yeah, I mean, I don't think the discussion can hurt, especially in light of, you know, what's happening with San Sebastian. Now would be a time to have that discussion again. Gary?
I just want to make a comment regarding septic systems in general. It's not just the canals. It's the watershed area that those septic tanks are in.
Right.
And as I had mentioned from meetings that I've been able to have the opportunity to discuss, the health of the harbor is coming back over the period of the last decade and a half, that there's been this push to get people off of septic from the watershed area to the estuary. It has a ongoing, long-term effect. It's, it's very obvious. If you're, if you're the farm family and you're, you know, a quarter of a mile or more beyond anywhere else, that's one thing. But if you are in a community that has a concentration of these, it can, it is effective, both environmentally and cost, in the overall scheme of things, to convert these. So, our situation is basically, we're going to be a subcontractor to the county for these areas that want, want to, want to, or have a need or are required to convert. And I think that we should just be on board and be willing to accept that and promote it.
That would be a change in direction.
In policy, yes.
In policy. That would definitely be a change in policy. Well, anyways, we're going to hear.
Yes. See, we've got, put a whole meeting together already.
This August meeting, when you come back, it's going to go on forever.
Well, we have three, yes.
Yeah, we have three in a row. He has not given us the meeting he's coming to yet.
Okay.
Okay.
But he will be available for one of those meetings.
Oh, yeah. He said he would.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
The, the rest of the financing, just to bring it to the forefront, we still have some residual financing for 2016 that we have not done and that we, that we may need to do this year, depending on how quickly those projects move forward. So, that is reflected in the pro forma and then the financing next year for the RO plant. You're aware that we are in the process of doing an application to the state. So, the state revolving fund for, for the RO plant, whole project, the first phase will be the deep injection well. We are continuing to maintain at least the minimum balance of three million, which is what is stated in your adopted financial policies. And we have a one and a half million R and R capital reserve as well. Lot mowing, we've already discussed. The tentative assessment agreed by Council is at 160. That is what we will bring to you in July. That will allow us to maintain a small administrative fee reimbursement. The five-cent gas tax fund, which is our paving program, has a subsidy still of 459,000 from the general fund, which we do with, with the millage rate. And the six-cent gas tax fund, which is what we use to maintain the roads, with the help of the grants, not grants, I'm sorry, but they're actually reimbursements that we get from the state of Florida for helping sweep the bridges and helping keep the roads clean. Without those, we would not be balanced. But with them, we are able to balance, and we're drawing down on a small portion of reserves. So, it is also sustainable for the next five years. So, a little bit better look, outlook than we had even a year ago. The rest of the funds, we will be bringing to you at the first meeting in July.
Questions for Sharon?
Nope. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Our award-winning finance department.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yay, yay. That was great.
Okay, we have no unfinished business, but we do have new business, and the first of which is the discussion of detached pergolas and the SROs.
Good morning. For the record, Terry Tubbs, Urban Design. This came up as a result of an application, actually, for a detached pergola. And when staff was doing the presentation, in my mind, I saw them as attached or inside a screen enclosure. And, but the way it was drafted and written, there is a provision that would allow them to be detached and separated from the primary structure. In the SRO district, there's a, a whole section that says that you can't have accessory structures. Everything has to be part of the primary structure. But there is an exception where it says, except as where otherwise permitted, which would be what would allow the pergolas to be detached. So, I'm just looking for direction. Is it okay that they're detached as long as they meet all the setback requirements? Or do we want to ensure that they are attached to the house?
I thought we approved both, attached and unattached. That's what I thought we did. Nancy?
I never really thought about it, but now that you've brought it up, I don't have a problem with them being detached as long as they meet all the setback requirements and they meet all the building code for, okay?
I agree.
I agree.
If we're good with it, that's, that's easy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Every now and then, our urban design manager brings up something that's an easy.
Every now and then.
Every now and then.
Okay. Next, we have the Neighborhood Speed Watch program.
Chief Tom Lewis, for the record. As you probably already know, residential speeding is probably the number-one complaint that the police department gets. So, we try to look at some cost-effective, innovative ways to address those. When you start talking about allocating sworn resources, we really try to look at crash data. We had about 585 crashes left here, which is mostly in our commercial district, along US 41, US 17, some of those more major intersections. Residential speeding really doesn't seem to have an impact in that. So, we try to steer more towards the educational side. This particular program, it's called Neighborhood Speed Watch. It's kind of a spinoff of a neighborhood watch program, and it's more of an educational tool. The way it works is we will train our police department volunteers that are currently existing, the ones that go out on patrol, they do traffic enforcement already, train them to use a piece of radar equipment, as well as encourage citizens potentially, if the council is interested in doing that, to use this radar equipment. They'd set up, set up on the side of the road on a residential roadway, monitor the speed traffic. If and when they see somebody on that road speeding, they record the license plate number. That information is then transferred back over to the police department, and the police department sends them an educational letter saying that they were observed speeding and just asking for their voluntary compliance in the future. Now, most of the research that we did, these type of programs exist statewide across the country. They're mostly in bigger cities, so I'm not really sure if it's a fit here. So, that's the reason it's being brought up for discussion.
I mean, I, if we do it 24/7, I don't know that that's necessary, but I would maybe like to try it, especially when we drop the speed in PGI, which we're doing soon. Have we done it? Are we dropping the speed near Gulfview?
On my bridge.
Oh, oh, Marion.
Yes.
Yes.
So, when we.
I thought you said PGI.
Well, that area.
That's, that's, that one bridge in PGI.
Right. We are dropping the speed. I think it would be interesting to be out there in kind of an enforcement without the ticket kind of way. So.
Well, let me just throw one thing out. The documents that you have in your package, they're very raw form. These are things that we're just kind of put together just to give you an idea of what the program would entail. So, there's, there's definitely going to be a time delay as far as implementing something like this. We're going to have to gather up training, actually develop the training for it, get the people into training before it would actually roll out. So.
We'll start down there. Kim?
I think it's a great idea, only because we spent one meeting just discussing how we were going to drop, you know, maybe we just need to drop all of the speed limits all over the city because we do have these, this problem on streets. And it would, I think it would be very interesting to see. I mean, I think it's a good idea. I mean, you're not going to get, they're not out there handing out tickets or anything.
No, there'd definitely be an agreement with anyone that's trained, that they're not to confront anybody. They're not there for any type of enforcement whatsoever. So, you know, there'd be some good training before we roll it out to make sure that they understand, you know, what's to be expected.
Tom?
I'm not supportive of putting residents out there on the street, taking radar readings and watching their neighbor's car go up, down, up and down a block, and, and then getting them notifications as a result of that. I would support giving the police department all of the technical paraphernalia that, that you guys need in order to accomplish something like that. We talked briefly about it yesterday. Putting something on one of your trailers that does the radar calculation, if that was out there and it was able to take a picture and, and note that a car was speeding through there and generate a letter from that, that's fine with me. But I don't want to see our residents out there, you know, on, on the streets monitoring radars.
Gary?
I have a question. This is, you, you take this license plate number, you generate a letter, you send that letter to the, to the owner of that vehicle.
Correct.
Then what happens to the record? Is that the end of the record? Or are you going to be, is the intent to keep a record within the police department of all these letters that have been sent?
Well, for public records laws, we would certainly store any of the information that we have until they met those type of, ability to purge those type of data. But we're not going to use or store this data for any other type of a purpose or, you know, access to that or give anyone else access that could potentially use it.
One could make the case. I'm not sure that I would make the case, but one could make the case that the, the storage of that, of that information, that data, then is almost Orwellian, if you want to take it to the extreme. Big Brother, if you will. So, I would, I would be uncomfortable, I'm uncomfortable with the storage of the data. I'm uncomfortable up to the point of the letter. But if, once the letter's set, then the information is purged, I could be more comfortable with it.
Yeah. Again, we, we would, we would just have to meet those records retention guidelines as far as state statute is concerned before we would actually be able to legally purge those documents.
Okay.
Nancy?
It's an interesting concept. And I know when I ride my bicycle around through the neighborhood, it's very easy to tell who you think is probably going excessive speed versus what is probably normal. But I just, you know, I struggle with this in that, you know, like I think was mentioned by Tom, about neighbors, watching neighbors and that kind of thing. But then I, I, I think back to the discussion yesterday at the Lawrence Dries Canal Advisory Committee, when there was a presentation by the Marine Patrol. It's a volunteer, just like this. It's, it's, you know, kind of, if you want to call it neighborhood watch, it's all citizens.
Sure. It's Neighborhood Marine Watch.
Neighborhood Marine Watch. They have the ability to issue a ticket. So, you know, it's, it's kind of like, well, how does this, what I'm thinking in my mind, how does this program, the Neighborhood Speed Watch program differ? Does it differ? You know, is this equivalent to the Marine Watch, which is, they're looking for all kinds of things and they, they actually do code enforcement and, and whatever. So, you know, we have, those are our neighbors that are a part of that program. So, I, I don't want to dismiss the value of something without really thoroughly vetting.
Sure.
How it would be handled? How would it be administered so that, because I know we have, because of our population, we have people that are at home a lot, and I'm trying to be very polite. Some of the people that are, pay attention to every move of something. You know, I get an email from one resident every time a plane goes over the house. And so, it's like, there are, you know, I just don't want this to be, I want to keep it, keep it on the level as opposed to having it become something that it's, it's, would be causing neighborhood problems.
Sure. I will tell you, I got mixed reviews. I've mentioned it to just a few people. I didn't want to get it out there until council had the opportunity to discuss it. One citizen made a comment that he absolutely loves the idea, but in no way, shape, or form would he ever get out on the side of the road on his street, because he certainly would not be very popular with his neighbors.
Gary?
I may have sounded a little bit negative before, and I was sincere in my, my reservations. But I happen to be one that's very much in favor of things that calm traffic in general. And then there's some areas in town, I think, that are more problematic. And as we've discussed in many meetings, the Marion, Olympia corridors, because they're wide, four-lane, autobahn-type, if you will, divided highway-type things are easily conducive to lull somebody into, not necessarily intentionally, but lull the somebody into doing something in excess of 40 in a 30 mile an hour zone.
Sure.
It's, it's real easy to do that. It's easy to do that with a group of cars. And then you look and you say, oh, my goodness, I'm doing 42 miles an hour. And you didn't even realize it. So, I'm all for the spirit of, of continuous discussion. I just have a little bit of concern with record-keeping, whatever state statute is. I'm not sure what that is. When, when we do have it, I appreciate if you come back.
Sure. I can definitely come back with that.
Just for my own notification.
Yeah, I think that would be good information to have. And I really think the volunteers would be the appropriate. And I do agree, like the main thoroughfares, I wouldn't want to see them set up on a, you know, just a short.
Well, from a, from a practicality standpoint, when you have a car speeding by, I mean, if they're on Marion Avenue, I don't know that the volunteer citizen, whoever we're going to be using, is going to have the ability to quickly whip their head around and document the license plate. So, on these slower residential roads, the idea was, just slightly past our piece of radar equipment, whether it be our radar speed display trailer, or whether it be an actual radar gun, there would be a temporary speed bump. You just roll up and roll out and actually would have the car slow to at least the degree enough where they would actually have the ability to record that license plate. So, looking at the ability for somebody, maybe some of our older volunteers or some of our citizens who are retired, to actually participate, it wouldn't really be practical on some of the roads like Olympia, Marion, and some of those roads that may have faster or even more traffic. This is.
Do we know anything about what Tom's recommendation was with the camera, instead of using people with the trailer?
We, we are doing some research. Jeff Woodard is doing that right now with some vendors. Some of the more traditional pieces of equipment, like speed cameras, are ones just like red light cameras, where they have a third-party vendor that comes in, they set up the equipment, they maintain it, but it sends you a ticket. So, we are researching whether or not we actually have a portable piece of equipment that will actually just record license plates and give us the opportunity to send letters. But again, even with that piece of equipment, you're going to have the, the same records retention guidelines to follow. So, but whether or not that piece of equipment exists, we're still researching.
Kim?
I think if it doesn't work on our main roads, like Marion, Olympia, and Rada, I mean, I mean, I don't know. People speed on those roads a lot.
Absolutely. This particular program would, is being discussed or proposed in addition to what we're already doing.
Right.
So, we're not going to reduce any type of traffic enforcement or other education initiatives. This would just simply be in addition to using volunteers and citizens as opposed to our sworn officers.
I like what, I mean, if there is a mechanism to do what Tom said, it would be better to just, I mean.
Take the person out of it?
We'd certainly like to see us pursue that. And then, if it's feasible, to give our law enforcement the tools that they need to enforce the laws in the city.
I'm not for the ticketing. The letter I would be okay with.
The letter, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Sometimes you need a ticket.
Well, maybe not the first time, but maybe the letter was the first.
I mean, if you know there's a red light camera up there, you're not speeding.
Yeah, because the, the trailer is one level, but this would be like a second level to that whole program so that there's some follow-through with it. Because, you know, when you drive by and it says you were going 42 in a 30, you slow down for a while.
Sure. The radar trailer, I'll be honest, is, is more for our visitors, you know, that may or may not know. They may come from a state or, or from a town where residential roads are not 30 miles an hour. So, it's a good educational tool to just kind of let them know. Most of our residential population that speed, they, they know what the speed limit is. They just choose to speed. So, this would, like you said, it would just be one more step to say, hey, you were speeding, and here's a letter.
I'd like to point out that we've had discussions on this council, that we do not have an abundance of signage of what our speed limits are. So, there's not a, a lot, as I recall, I think when we discussed on Marion, there's a 30 mile an hour limit that's just outside the door here. And then all, and there's not another one until you get to Ponse Park. So, I mean, that's, in part of this traffic calming, that's, that's one of the issues we've discussed that may need to be put also on the table. I may forget that it's a 30 mile an hour limit by the time I get to the yacht club.
I would just like to see if we're going to continue to discuss this, that it might be implemented in such a way that it continues to maintain the respect that the Marine Patrol does. Because I think neighbors feel comfortable. People feel comfortable when they see the Marine Patrol boat. And that is, you know, we only have one Marine officer. And we have, what, 40-some people that participate in the Marine Patrol program, and they're all with, you know, appropriately attired, and, and it's very, very well done. And, and so I would want to see this type of a program be something similar, that it's respected and not handled in a professional manner.
Sure. I couldn't agree more. That, when you look at Phoenix, Arizona, their program failed for lack of citizen interest. And I think they were kind of disorganized. And like you said, it was more so, it kind of disbanded. That's why this particular one, I would propose that we use our current volunteers as the base. You know, they'll be uniformed. They'll have actually a marked patrol car, you know, in the area. People will know that they're representing the department and will have a standard.
I think that makes more sense.
Because when, when I read this, I envisioned somebody sitting in their, in their kitchen with the window and the, you know, and, or, or they're out on their front lawn, sitting in a lawn tree.
No, no. Part of the program really is visibility. More and more visibility, I think, is, is probably the.
Right. But I mean, the way this was drawn up, it's almost like, you know, people sitting in their front lawn, you know. It's like, I just didn't want to see that.
No. All right. Well, I will do those follow-up items, and I'll get back to you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It will not be rolled out tomorrow.
Okay.
So, if you see someone with the radar, know that it's not a volunteer.
Recommendation from city officers. Howard?
Well, I didn't think I was going to have something, but I do now. Let's talk about the Monagorda Library.
Okay.
Yesterday, Riquini and I had a meeting with the county's capital projects coordinator and facilities person. They received the geotechnical engineering report, subsurface soil for the library site, the new library site. And it came back with some, some issues regarding when you go down a certain feet in certain specific areas, we're going to have to do some digging, digging out of what's down there and putting in new fill and compacting. So, we have a couple of alternatives. And the first alternative they threw out was, and this is something to be expected in, in an area like that. I mean, it's not, we had it in the garage.
Mm-hmm.
One alternative is to turn this over to the construction management firm when they're ready and to hire, have them do the work. You know, they would fill, they would dig up the areas that the study identified as needed to get dug up. Riquini is here just to pipe in, in case I say something off track. And then they would refill it, compact it, and get it ready for construction. The county estimated, the county staff estimated, that that could run anywhere from $600,000 or more to do that work, depending on when they dig down, what they really uncover and, and the depth, and the, and the, how much of it, how much of the area they have to cover. We brought out another alternative, and that was to do what we did with the garage, and that was to put pilings down. And, but that's expensive. That's not even in the budgeted program for the library. So, the third alternative is something that we feel has some merit and that I want to bring to council's attention. And that is, if between county staff and city staff, we could do the work in-house with the assistance of the county's contractor, I guess it's Artiman and Associates, who would monitor the work and sign off on it, we could avoid those costs. Yes, we would have in-kind costs, but these would be our employees, our equipment. It would be the county supplying all the fill material on their dime. If we had to rent a compactor for a certain amount of time, we would. We would be using public works and utilities staff. We've done this work before on our projects. It's not something we haven't done. We could certainly avoid those costs. And it's, and, and the fact that we wouldn't have to get it done in a week means we have until probably December, January to complete it. Because that's when the county doesn't, county seems to think they'll actually start construction on the site around the December-January timeframe. So, it gives us plenty of time to, to get it done and have it certified, ready for construction, to hand over to the construction manager. Now, normally, I would have this as an agenda item. I wouldn't bring this up under like this. But unfortunately, it was discussed at the county commission meeting, I guess, yesterday. You were, you were watching. And it was interesting because we were up there meeting anyways on this. But we didn't know it was going to be discussed at the county commission meeting. So, I had to bring it up.
I liked it.
Have I left anything out?
We did get it covered.
I think it makes sense.
In what, in what context was it discussed at the commission meeting?
That there were problems with the site. And then there was also discussion about other sites where the library could be located, such as Edison or South County Regional Park, which I looked at airily on Google Earth. And I do not see a lot of space at South County Park. So, I was surprised by the discussion because we weren't even aware that there were issues. And they were called to a meeting to come up with solutions to the issue. So, I was picking up the phone to call. I was picking up the phone to call Howard when he called me. You can wa, watch, watch the county commission meeting. You can get your own take on the discussion. I believe it was under their comments as well. It was not anything on their agenda. I think it's a reasonable solution, and they are going to be discussing this at their June workshop. And then my understanding is that their July workshop, they are going to be talking about programming of the library and other issues. So, the next two county commission workshops, the library will be, not the naming of the library, but the library project will be on their next two workshop agendas. So, I, I, I'm in agreement with this solution. I mean, anytime you look at commercial property, this is one of, especially a large parcel that's had development on it. I mean, Kim, you know, this is all, no surprises here. I mean, the fact that they, they weren't going to find anything would have been more of a surprise than, than they found something. So, I think it's with any parcel that, that they're going to deal with to put the, any facility on, you're going to go through something like this. So, if we can do it in kind, I don't see any problem with that.
So, are they still discussing possibly moving it?
They did yesterday.
I know, but did they decide, no, they needed to do this?
They didn't talk about any solution. They just talked about that there were problems, because they didn't know about what the sta, I mean, the staff was meeting right as they were having the county commission meeting. I was just surprised that it came out, you know, without any kind of resolution or solution being...
Well, I think it's a...
Considered.
Gary?
Yes.
I, I just wonder how many more times, we haven't put a shovel in the ground, and the, the county is evidently looking to the pockets of the city of Punta Gorda to help on the project. And I can't imagine that it's, it's, it's going to be different as we go along, and we're trying to achieve an architectural look to the library. It just really troubles me that the library, that the county would just won't provide a library that, that meets the requirements of the city. It's just frustrating, that's all.
Yes.
The way we as staff looked at it was anytime we can, that the county staff and our staff can put together some in-kind work, where no dollars have to be put more, no additional dollars have to be put towards the project, whatever dollars are there for the project can go towards the, the, our priorities of the architectural kind of design and the, the, the actual floor space and the programming, whatever we can do so that the county can concentrate on the other things that are priorities, we thought it, it might be reasonable.
Oh, I think it's very reasonable.
I think it's really reasonable if that's what they do.
If that's what they do.
And I think that, that, that we need to make sure that it's clear, that that's our expectation. And, and I agree with, I, I also concur with Tom's frustration, that it's, you know, we went into this in the very beginning with the, with expectations that seemed to be, you know, our partner is perhaps changing the fulfillment of the expectation. But I think there's acknowledgement that we need to do something different, that we don't want to repeat any kind of, the way some previous programs were handled. So, I'm just trying not to be disparaging here. I do want to, I want to be positive and, and appreciate, you know, all the hard work on everybody's part. So, I think it's just for us just to make it clear that what our expectation is, is a reasonable thing to do.
Well, I got the sense from county staff that they are, they are with us on this, that they are, their goal is to try and do everything they can to present a program to the county commissioners, that to preserve our architectural intent. They know that.
They stated that at the workshop. Yeah, they are very much...
Right, they are.
In that vein.
They are.
Mm-hmm.
As I recall, they pointed out that the original budget was set on the assumption there would be a revenue of $18 million from the one cent tax sources, and that they acknowledged that there was considerably more revenue that had been generated, and that when they went, mentioned it back to the architectural fund, that maybe there would be a way to, to, to do that. So, if they're still on that track and mindset, but Tom is, you know...
Gary, there's a second tier of 1% sales tax projects that is scheduled to, to be the beneficiary of any increase in the sales tax.
Okay.
So, as I, as I mentioned at, at the, at the last meeting, the original budget for the library was 7.4, 7 and a half million dollars. The, the value of the land that they had in the budget was $550,000. During the process and during the discussion, prior to the city ever agreeing to turn over the property to them, the county staff took the value of that property, deducted it from the budget. The budget now became $6,900,000 to build the, the library. There was no quid pro quo. It was just, just on, as Nancy said before, it was done with the expectation that they would deliver a product that we could be happy with. They're, I can only...
And I, and I think the frustration for me, and maybe this is what you're getting at too, and Nancy, we were at those meetings where the architect presented in their, in their estimation, a $12 million building to the public. And then once we say, okay, which one of these three do you like? Oh, we really like this one, you know? And then they come back and say, well, don't look at it as we're taking things away. When you've seen all the things that they've taken away, you know, this is a work in progress. So, I think the frustration for me has been the process in which they went about this, presenting something that was over the budget. It was way over the budget. And so, you know, that did not work in their favor or our favor, because now that we've seen what, what they really have, what they really can put out there, you know, we're not happy with it. And, and the event center was brought up by the county commissioners at that workshop. So, it's out there, what your sentiments are out there, and, and I agree that, you know, we, we, and, and just listening to the meeting yesterday, Florida Southwestern College is detached from the city, from the residential base. It's not a place where people could walk easily or ride their bike easily, and I'm pretty sure they would have a library there for the college. I mean, it was mentioned to tailor this to the Western Michigan University, which I see those two things as totally separate. I see a community library as being one thing, and something for Western Michigan University being something totally different. So, hopefully we can come to a resolution. The workshops, people should attend. There is no public input at those workshops, but you're, you can email your county commissioners, and you can let them know how you feel. Yes.
I, I know the county, Ray Sandrock, county administrator's going to want to know how the discussion went, whether he can present at the workshop. If this is an alternative that seems reasonable.
Yes.
Can he present that we would assist?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I would like to say, this is a reasonable, this sounds a, and so forth, but I think that we're all consensus here. I don't think it's a reasonable alternative if we're going to wind up with a warehouse box for a library. I don't think anything is reasonable in that case.
I'll convey that, which I think they know already.
They know that, they don't...
Yeah, but, you know...
Well, and they will watch our, our video, and they will hear our discussion, so...
There is just an additional point. I, I did email the commissioners and asked them to reinstate that 500, $550,000 that they got from the budget. I asked them to put that back into the budget. I don't know, that, that's probably not likely going to happen. I also did find out, I think I mentioned it, that the state has available $500,000 in grant funding for construction. It was mentioned by one of the commissioners that they would apply for that, and I hope that they do, and contribute that to the project as well.
Well, the next question on that grant, will the, that will be added to the budget, or would that be deducted from, added?
Yeah.
Okay. As long as we're on that, it's an addition.
Well, that was the intent. We, I'll, I'll make sure that we get an answer on that.
I mean, it truly, it was, I think, our intent, because we gave the county the land, that we would get a product that would help the county not only get the project started earlier, but get a product that we really felt fit the historic character of the community. And for the county to, staff to take away funds is actually, that first step actually, in my estimation, was...
Well, this is, this is, yes, it's located in the city. It's open to anybody, everybody. It's for everybody. It's not just for, it's not a city library at this point. But it's, it's for the whole Charlotte County, visitors alike. I mean, it's, it's located within the city limits, but it should be a facility that's everybody can be proud of.
Okay. Go for it.
Yes. We're all in agreement that that's a great solution.
Absolutely.
To the minimal problem that was found.
A good collaborative solution.
Yes.
Okay. We will proceed.
Okay. Anything else? City attorney?
I just noticed that our next meeting is after the Fourth of July, if I'm correct, and so I have a safe Fourth of July.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
City clerk?
Under boards and committees, announcement of vacancies, we have two three-year terms on the building board. And then under appointments for the planning commission.
Do you know if the building board, are they interested, or you, have you asked them to renew?
We have sent letters to them asking about their interest. So, this is for the planning commission, two three-year terms. We have three eligible applicants, so you're going to be voting for two, please.
And the appointees are Winford Kron and Chuck Thomas.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Policy and legislation, the only thing that I have is that it was requested or asked that maybe we send a letter to the mayor of the city of Orlando under the city of Punta Gorda. Would that be fine?
That would be great.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. City council member comments. Kim?
I too wish everyone a happy Fourth of July. And as you all know, next week is qualifying week, and I will not be running for city council again next year, for next season, so... But we do have somebody wonderful, you know, at least one person, Jahah Cummings, who's agreed to run, so I'm very excited about that. And, but I still have another four months to go.
Show up for work.
I will. I will.
Well, we'll put her to it.
This is the lame duck section over here.
I have nothing other than to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July and safely.
Thank you. You too. Gary?
I would just like to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. I also would like to thank our police department, who has shown great restraint in, in a number of issues lately. I would like to point out that they did apprehend a person who shot at them without firing the shot, because I know that unfortunately, through the news, they're taking a little bit of a beating right now. I just want to say that as a city, I think we should be very proud of our police department.
Thank you. Nancy?
Yes, I would say, as a city, we should be very proud of our police and fire department. I had the firsthand experience with them last week, when I had, unfortunately, was involved in a traffic accident, a wreck. And so, I'm blessed that all I have is a fractured left hand, and, and so, it's, they, they were right on the scene. They were awesome and handled things in an extremely professional manner, and we're just very blessed. And so am I, so...
Yes, glad to hear that.
We're glad you survived this role as you have.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I feel fortunate to just have a, you know, sore back, and I will, I'll amend, so...
Citizens comments on any item. You will have three minutes. Come to the podium, state your name. We have a lovely green, yellow, red timer. Any citizens' comments? Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned.
Ray's not here today.